Let's stand, let's stand and pretend to do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bacharin.
Present.
Rusty Bunninger.
Karen.
Present.
Rusty Johnson.
Present.
Rusty Knutson.
Where'd he go? He was just here.
I'm sure he'll be back.
He'll be back.
Rusty Mack.
Here.
Rusty Smith.
Here.
Rusty Thompson.
All right, well, we do have a quorum and we can continue. First item on the agenda, Mr. Knutson, where the hell are you?
Here he is.
Dave?
Ah, sorry.
Okay.
Let my down and you knew it, yeah, the meeting because the computer went asleep.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, we have done roll call, we are now at approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we had, um, uh, adjust the agenda. And I'd like to add the possibility of an executive session.
Okay. Thank you, so we have a motion.
Well, I wanted to say that this is for the purpose of receiving legal advice from our attorney.
Okay. On the.
Oh.
Initiative.
On this initiative, yeah. Regarding this initiative.
Yeah. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to amend the agenda to add an executive session. For advice, for legal advice, based, uh, for this initiative we're discussing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello, hello.
Opposed?
Hello?
Suzanne?
I'm sorry, if you are not on the board or an invited guest, you will should not be speaking, all opposed?
You made a motion and usually after motions, people are allowed to, um, actually, uh, say something in the audience. Before the vote.
Make your comment Suzanne.
Um, I was just wondering about, um, the executive session portion of it, since, um, I mean, the, it, I'd be interested in hearing things publicly because if it, if the board votes no, it's gonna go to the public. And I wanna hear what the attorney has to say about this as a voter. I mean, I think, I think it would be really wise for us to be hearing things about this. Because this is something that will be put in front of the voters if you guys vote no. So I don't think a secret session is appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much Suzanne, yes.
And, and can you like?
Suzanne, thank you, Ms. Mack? Trustee Mack?
He didn't say we would go into an executive session, he said the, a possible, so, it, this, it just gives us an option, we're not saying we're going into an executive session, it is an option.
And ma- madam mayor, this is, this is Jeff Conklin, hello everyone, uh, good to see. The, m- my suggestion is to add an executive session, I, I intend to provide a, a good overview of things in the public meeting, but there are certain elements that, at, at least at this stage, I think would be appropriate for executive session to ensure appropriate direction to me, so I just wanted to provide that, that clarification, um, with the agenda amendment.
Okay.
This would be, so.
Thank you very much, all right, we have a motion on the table to approve an executive session, the possibility of an executive session for legal advice on this, on this ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is announcements, I don't have any announcements, does anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to new business. All right, Mr. Conklin, would you like to begin by giving us your review, please?
Sure, sure, so, um, I would like to just provide a little overview of the procedure for this initiative, a little more detail as to, to what I've done in my, uh, initial review of the ordinance and then, um, just some other procedural matters. And, um, so, you know, as you know, this initiative, initiated ordinance was brought to the town clerk with the signatures on December 21st. And the statute prescribed certain timelines, the, under Title 31, as to how that moves forward. And so the, the final determination of sufficiency, that's a, a standard to which many of the dates for action under the statute are attached, is upon, um, uh, after the completion of the protest period, and so that ended on January 30th of this year. And the, the statute requires that the, that the board either, either adopt the proposed ordinance or take no action or specifically refer it to the, uh, the voters. So a no action would mean that it would have to go to a vote at either a regular or a special election. And that election would need to occur within sixty to a hundred and fifty days of that date of final determination of sufficiency. So the last date for the board to take action on this is at its February 22nd meeting. The twenty days falls on a weekend, but the statute prescribes that if that date does, that it gets extended to your next regular business day, which with Monday being a holiday, that would be the 22nd. And, so that's kind of where we are. In, in, in the meantime, I have had, uh, an opportunity to review the ordinance and prior to your February 8th meeting, had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Brunner, one of the, um, persons on the petitioners committee. And I let him know and I, I, I've shared with Corinne and, 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 uh, and Bo at that time that, you know, in my review of the initiated ordinance, I think there are a number of provisions that are in conflict with state law and likely unlawful and that also as a threshold matter, there may be some things that aren't subject to the initiative power. The initiative power only allows for legislative actions and changes and not those that are considered administrative. And so that was how I, my, the discussion with Mr. Brunner and a suggestion that the board continue its consideration of this ordinance to the 22nd to allow for me to spend a little bit more time and review it. And, you, I think there's an interest from the towns perspective in seeing that the, the best and, and, and legal version of any ordinance be submitted to the voters to see if there's an opportunity to have any discussion with, uh, the petitioners committee on this ordinance, um, regarding any, any possible changes. Those that might be, in, in my view, again, kind of the, the best version of this ordinance going forward. And so I have had time to, to, to review this in a bit more detail and, and I will tell you that I spoke with Mr., uh, Mr. Brunner again today and shared some of my, uh, shared some of my analysis and review, again, just letting him know what provisions I see as problematic in, in regards to, uh, state law. And so this, this ordinance at- attempts to do or proposes to do a number of things. And I'll, I'll, uh, describe them broadly, um. And one, one of the things that it, it seeks to do is to provide access to additional records that are public records under the Open Records Act. So under Cora, you have records that constitute public records and the, and those that don't. And then for public records, there are certain records that may be withheld from disclosure if they're contrary to the public interest in those records that, that must be withheld from public disclosure. And so th- this ordinance, based on how it's written, would say documents that are public records, to the extent that they may be withheld from disclosure as they relate to town-owned infrastructure and financial records, we're taking that discretion away and they should be disclosed. That, that is a, a general concept that I think is, is, would be permitted or through an ordinance could be, could be authorized, you know, you could take away some of that discretion and allow that to go forward. There are certain elements within that that would be, um, as it's written, a little problematic related to excluding claims of privilege and, um, and, uh, i- in that beginning section, but as a general concept, that, that, that is what this attempts to do in part. And then the, the remainder of the ordinance does a few different things, including, um, trying, uh, proposes to, uh, provide more detail and prescription as to if a, it, records request is going to be rejected, what that response must look like. Tries to incorporate some time procedures related to Cora as it might apply to these other records. It also then significantly proposes to create jurisdiction in the municipal court for a number of different things. And so my, my main points of my overview are that, to the extent that the, the proposed ordinance is in conflict with the Open Records Act or state law or the Colorado Constitution, those are simply things that, in, in my view, even if adopted, would be, would be unlawful. And so, uh, and I'm providing this, this, um, analysis here in, in this open meeting, just so everyone has, has the, the, the benefit of it. And, um, and again, it would propose that an executive session that the board and I have some discussion as to more specific legal things in terms of how to, to move forward, uh, on, on this, uh, initiative. But here, my, you know, again, the purpose here is to provide some, uh, of this analysis, um, in the meeting a- as to, as what might be appropriate in initiated words, what might not. So there's a few things in here that I think are problematic under the Open Records Act. There are things that would deprive the town of some jurisdiction or remedies that would exist under the Open Records Act. And there are some, uh, elements that would, um, uh, might be in conflict with other, with other statute. And then I think that significantly, again, the, the provisions that relate to the creating jurisdiction and within the municipal court for certain things, it, it's simp- it simply can't, it, it's, it's not permissible for a statutory town. So the Colorado Constitution grants judicial powers to its different courts. And it says that with respect to o- other courts of the state, those other than the Supreme Court, the District Court and the County Court, that those courts would have jurisdiction as the General Assembly may establish. In the General Assembly, the Colorado Legislature has established the jurisdiction of the municipal court in Title 13. And Title 13 states what the extent of the, uh, jurisdiction of the municipal court is. And so as a statutory town, there's just not the ability to expand or amend what the jurisdiction of the court would be. This might be different in a home rule community to the extent that the jurisdiction would extend to matters of local control. But that, that is gonna be a problem with, in my view, of, of, with this proposed ordinance of those jurisdictional matters. There are also provisions related to waiver of governmental immunity. Again, you know, the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act and the, the exemptions to which it applies, th- there's some incongruency with how this is proposed to, to apply with respect to other claims that might arise under this ordinance, in my view. And, and again, to the extent that there is other provisions of the ordinance that are in conflict with, with state law, it, um, the, as a statutory town, there's just a more limited ability to, uh, to, to, to adopt legislation that would be in conflict with that. And to the extent that if you were a home rule municipality, there are issues that were not matters of statewide concern or otherwise not mixed, matters of mixed local and statewide concern that are in conflict, there'd be some greater ability to potentially adopt this ordinance. So in a, in a nutshell, that is, that is my overview. Uh, what I had intended to do was, because of the, just the limited time with my schedule that I've, I had to spend with this ordinance, I could provide a more detailed analysis, uh, for, for counsel, um, here later this week in writing or by the tw- meeting on the 22nd. I, I shared with the petitioners committee, you know, my perspective and, and review, uh, with Mr. Brunner today on the phone. And, um, uh, and I guess that, I guess that's about all I have right now, but would otherwise open it up to questions of the board, I, I just, you know, I think it's that, I'm, I'm happy to answer those questions, but I, you know, the, in, in the interest of, there's an interest in doing much, as much of this as possible in public and in, in the opens, in open session and that's my general overview of the proposed ordinance. There are certain elements that I think are not in conflict with state law and there would be the ability for the, the town to adopt um, as an initiated ordinance, if this is the form of the ordinance that were, the, the board's, is in front of the board, there's not the ability for the board to just pick and choose which elements of it it may wish to adopt. It's, we're gonna adopt this ordinance or we're gonna refer it to the, to the voters. And, yeah, I guess with that, I'll, I'll stop and see if there are any questions that I might be able to answer at this point in time.
All right, questions from the board for Mr. Conklin? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Just an overarching question, so with all of the conflicts that you have identified, is it still required to go in its current form to the voters? In the absence of us doing anything?
In this, so there's, if the board is taking action on it in this form, if there's, if no action is taken or it's referred to the voters, it would go to the voters in this form. Once that, once that decision occurs, there's not the ability to amend any provision of this ordinance by the petitioners committee to, to, um, prior, you know, prior to it going to the vote of a special election.
Did that, go ahead.
What I'm wondering is, if it goes to the voters and it has all these inherent problems and conflicts with statute and constitution and the voters vote for it, then what?
Well, that, that is a, there, there may be a few options there, one is that there is a severability provision of the ordinance, so it's, to the extent that it is in conflict with state law, the elements that are not would survive, but that survival, those portions that might survive would, may only survive after potentially a, uh, review by the court to determine which provisions are or are not, um, are lawful, that could take the form of a declaratory judgment action brought by the town to have that reviewed. There's, I suppose, there's, there's potentially a few different options, I, 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 what, I'm a little hesitant to go too far into that, just because I think, potential, any potential legal action by the town, I, at this point, would prefer to discuss an executive session and not get ahead of ourselves on anything related to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Um, I have two questions, if you could, if I can address the speaker. Um, first, um, I'm not familiar with how the process works in negotiating changes to the, like, a number of people have signed this petition, but then can the committee just make changes to the position, to the petition without going back to the people that have signed it to ensure that they agree?
Yeah, so, the, the petitioners committee is granted with, with some, um, power to take actions with respect to the petition, but it's, it's, it's a fair point and question about to what extent those changes, uh, any amendments to the ordinance, what form that might be able to take and what actions they might be able to take. That, that is frankly one issue that I'm still uh, reviewing to have a better, uh, comfort level with and so I, I need to spend a little bit more time on, on, on that issue specifically.
Yes, Mr. Knutson.
And if I may, I'd have a second question. Say it does go to the voters and there's a time limit on when it has to go to the voters, I think I heard you say sixty to a hundred and fifty days.
Yes.
Can the board vote to add other items onto the special election? It may be an opportunity to really find where voters are at on a number of issues. And I was just curious, does a special action have to be held just with that one issue? Or can the board actually add other items for voters to decide?
Um, I think the board could likely use that opportunity to call for a special election or to utilize that special election for other matters that could be brought to the voters at a special election. Um, so to the extent it's something that may only be brought to the voters at a regular municipal election or coordinated election, then, then it wouldn't, but, um, if there's, in short, yes, it's possible to put up, to have other things on the ballot, just depends on what it is.
Great, thank you, yes, Ms. Bunninger.
There, uh, this, this, uh, initiative is a, is definitely in two different directions, one is more, uh, openness on the Cora requests. And the other is the suing the town for, because they don't like an ordinance. And, uh, apparently that other last thing is, is not according to state law. Can that part just be dropped off and the rest of it go to the town, to the, to the, uh, voters?
Yeah, that, that's a little bit of a piggyback on Dave's question and, 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 you know, one that, um, you know, I, 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 I'm, I'm trying to ensh- complete my review of, to, to, and that is, to, to what extent could a, uh, initiated ordinance be amended once it's, once it's past the protest period? And alternatively, what other options might the town have to, um, maybe accomplish some middle ground on an issue that's contained?
Yes. I mean, uh, I, I don't like the idea of waiving governmental immunity, uh, for claims, I don't like, you know, I, I, basically, they want more rights and take away the town's rights. Uh, we are already, uh, posting all the financials. Uh, there, we do not wish to post the schematics of our infrastructure. I mean, there's, you know, uh, security questions involved and I'm sure that's one of the things that, that the town could say no on, you know, if, if a core request came. Uh, the thing about making all core requests free and work product is the thing, work product. I, 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 I'm just, I believe that the town should have, and the town citizens should have access to completed studies, to completed, whatever, to all the financial records that they want because they're already posted. But, uh, work product, does that mean every revision of every document has to be saved and printed and every post-it note given to Mr. Brunner when he asks? This is harassment and at what point does the town have any rights?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot in there, but, uh, yeah, the, 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 there are a lot of questions that arise from this ordinance, including to what extent would any, um, any record fall into the work products, uh, uh, category be available pursuant to this ordinance, so long as it's not one that shall not be disclosed? So, you know, I mean, that, as it began, I think there's some policy motivations for, for some of these changes that there might be, uh, with, with, you know, well-crafted legislation that might be able to accom- be accomplished, it's, um, d- doing this on, on the fly at this point, i- it, with, is a little difficult, um, for a number of reasons, but, yeah, that is, the questions you asked are questions that, that, that are, I, I don't know that I have an answer for at this point.
Can we, uh, can the committee, uh, can they say, let's negotiate, I mean, we have not talked to the committee. We, as the town board, have not talked to the committee about these things. Uh, so there has been no negotiation as far as I know. Uh, can we at this point say, hey, let's meet together and see how we can come up with something decent that can pass?
Yeah, um, it, it, it's hard to do it right now in the context of this initiated ordinance, you know, as, as part of legislation, legislation can take a number of different forms and get, get, it's easier to have input and negotiation on, on, you know, what those changes might be through public comment and by, you know, uh, opinions of, of the trustees. Um, I'm gonna reserve a couple of comments for executive session if we, uh, with related to some of that, I think, but, um, that, that's.
Okay, one last question. If, if, if we just sent this to the voters as it stands, does the town have, uh, a right to put it, put their, like, yes, no, in favor of, not in favor of, on the ballot, on the ballot? Do they have, town has a right to tell the public their side?
The town can take a position, I guess, with, so the fair campaign practices that limits the town from spending any money on advocacy related to an issue, but it expressly authorizes the town to adopt a resolution with respect to a position on, on issues.
Okay.
Um, so that would be the extent that the town as a government might be able to do anything with respect to this, once it's, once it, once there is a decision to place it on the ballot.
Thank you. I'll mute myself.
Other questions from the board? All right, seeing, yes, Ms. Mack?
This might be a moot question, I'm not sure if I fully understood whether or not the courts can be involved in this, but, um, there's also a, a fourteen-day cooling off period prior to going to court. And if there is a way for this to be heard by the courts, it would seem like that would also apply too. And again, I, I might have, I didn't fully understand what you were saying about whether this can be passed and the courts can get involved, but, um,
Yeah.
That, so, there, it's really important, if it is, if that's possible for it to go to the courts.
So certainly, once adopted, there's the ability to, for the town to seek judicial review of, of this, um. There is, is a general, within the initiative process, there's the, the ability to have a court, make a determination as to whether things are appropriately subject to the initiative power, this is that administrative versus legislative power distinction, but that is really done on the front end of this, timing-wise. Um, I haven't had a chance to complete research on part of this issue as to whether on the front end, to what extent a, an, uh, an initiative could be challenged, but as a general matter, I think the most likely, uh, opportunity, once it's referred to the ballot, is following any, um, any vote, now that there, it's outside any sort of protest period or other prescribed opportunities to do that within the statute. I don't know if that was clear or not, but that was, it, it's, it's hard, there, there's not a great opportunity right now, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, on, on page ten of the packet, under the, uh, section two dash eleven dash F, damages and fees, it says the court shall award reasonable cost, damages and attorney fees to any member of the public prevailing in any suit or court action brought under this ordinance. Um, which, which is fine, but then you go to the next one, section two dash eleven dash G, and it's, uh, doubling the damages and fees. If, um, if the court has already awarded reasonable costs, why would we want to accept double the damages and fees?
I don't, I don't have a good answer for that question, uh.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I'm just throwing it out. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, you under and 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 there are certain parts of this ordinance, as I discussed with Mr. Brunner today and that are largely incorporations of Cora. And there is prevailing parties, attorney's fees for claims under Cora. If there's comments that are wrongfully withheld. The I I know one of the motivations for this is that it's a it's a high bar. It it and it it is a high bar to get into court. It's not, you know, requires hiring an attorney to most often to, if you're going to bring in action in district court. And some of the, I think, policy motivation on some of this was to to make that more accessible um, the those types of challenges. So, but the the point of me saying this is that there's, there there is, the attorney chief shifting element of that is something that that already exists under the law with respect to with respect to Cora claims. Now, to the extent that this is attempting to broaden that to other types of claims that might arise from this ordinance, then there's um that 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 doesn't exist under the law.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ms. Nick.
All right, are we allowed to just make a a comment? I mean, I I do have some thoughts on this, again, just like the overall process. Um. I think putting something like this before out of the people would would not be in the town's best interest. I don't think people fully underst- I think very few people understand open records. I think very few people would take the time to really, really learn what this is all about. I would personally much rather see this come to some sort of an ordinance. Because at least with an ordinance, we can get public comment. We can tailor it and we're not relying on, with all respect to the public, a lot of people who may just say, well, yeah, the town is, you know, I've had a problem with the town or I had a problem with them and I'm going to vote this way. I I just, if we could get an ordinance, I would feel a whole lot more comfortable personally as a citizen and as a board member. And just really hope we can steer the discussion that way and um and and we're just basically laypeople to to get some real serious legal advice on this is just going to be invaluable. Um, so that's where I am with all of this. I have lots of little questions, but I think they're kind of all moot right now until we really understand the legality of of what we're looking at. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nick. Yes, Ms. Nick.
So it seems to me that because the clock has been ticking and we have lost our opportunity to do some of this introspection and ordinance writing, because the twenty second is the drop dead date where we either, if we don't do anything, it's going to the voters as a special election. And let me understand this, the special election is not the April fifth election where the four of us that are running for office. It is actually a separate election done. I don't know if it's before the fifth or after the fifth. But it seems to me, we we're between a rock and a hard place. We were not given an adequate time to bring this forward as an ordinance. And we're now at a place where it seems like it has to go to the voters. Uh, in my opinion, based on where we are and we have one week left to try to. And and I'm assuming in the next week, we could create an ordinance that if it met the Mr. Brunner's, um, if he agreed to it, he could pull back on this initiative. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think there may be the ability to with withdraw the petition. Again, that's something within, there are certain rates granted to the petitioner's committee and a, you know. Um, would um. Um, but but the town, you know, separately, could certainly pursue legislation addressing some some of these issues on the center court.
So, go ahead, Ms. Smith, if you have another question.
I just wanted to um make it clear that to do so, though, has to be done and approved on the twenty second in order for this to not go to the special election. And Mr. Brunner would have to agree. Is that right?
Correct, yeah, for this to be withdrawn, if it's possible, it would have to occur prior to that time, yeah.
So just for clarification, so if Mr. Brunner would agree to withdraw this petition based on some agreement with the board as to what actions we would take, then that could be accomplished on the twenty second, correct?
Um, well, I I I so. The agreement component of that is a is a little different. So there the 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 town can't buy agreement. There there could be separately pursued some other legislation uh related to these issues in an ordinance and would not necessarily need to be done by the by the twenty second.
Okay.
But that may weigh on whether how Mr. how the petitioner's committee intended to um perhaps take any action with respect to the the petition.
Other questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Who comprises the petitioner's committee? Is it a number of people or?
It's a Bill Brunner and Jeanette Brunner.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Yes, Ms. Button.
Do I, I do I understand that the uh using the municipal court to sue the town is not allowed under state law? So that part is 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 pretty much gone. So we're talking about Cora requests and whether whether the town would permit uh free Cora requests or uh I don't know what, you know, can a person come twice a day? Or do they have to come one every ten days? Or are there any, I don't know what the Cora laws are, Corinne would know. But uh if we made a an ordinance referring to the Cora requests and how we are going to broaden it or what it would include, but we still can't can't give away the classified stuff. I I don't know how we would do it, but but if we if we made an ordinance that satisfied Mr. Brunner, that said it would make it easier to get Cora requests, not necessarily on work product. Then, I mean, who who's going to say, who talks to Mr. Brunner? We we can't. How do we get this done?
Well, I uh, I can't. And I I would suggest that we reserve some of this discussion for executive session to talk uh talk about legal issues as to how how to address this moving forward. Um, I wanted to provide here in the meeting, open to the meeting, my overview substantive review of the ordinance and answer any questions related largely to the substance of this. And hopefully, you know, address those more procedural things and um questions in executive session. And I've touched on some of them here, but I think any others I prefer to up there.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Yes, Ms. Nick.
Thank you. Just one more. I I think in addition to this, there are some things that we can do to maybe um create a little more trust and a little more transparency. Uh, for one, perhaps an ad hoc committee to review the town records policy that is posted on Muni docs. Maybe we could look at the time response, that the way that policy reads as far time response, particularly into uh uh as it pertains to US mail. Maybe we could post, uh, have a place where the violations that the town receives are posted on the website. I think I just think there are other things that are not being done that we could do to go even beyond an ordinance. Um. A few ideas that I thought of as I was working my way through this. It it's, we need transparency and transparency equals trust or hopefully equals trust. And I think that's the direction we should always be moving is to be more transparent and more forth forthcoming in in everything that's going on in the town.
Thank you. Anything else to the board? All right, seeing none. Mr. Brunner, I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm really happy that Mr. Conklin is here to speak for himself. I first thing I want to say is I had a very brief conversation or a amount of time to speak with him before the last meeting. And apparently I misunderstood the depth of his misgivings. Uh, I took it more as I had said as something about the setting of fees, and that seems to be the least of it. So uh, and I'm very happy that we've been able to talk some today. I think I understand his concerns more and I think he understands mine. Um, so the bottom line is we're in a pickle. Uh, the protest period's gone, I begged for communication and got none. And we're kind of in a corner here. Um. A compromise is certainly possible, but I'm loath to just let go of everything for a uh a song and a promise at this point. So. I don't know, how do we proceed?
Well, I guess.
I mean, I I could go through and make a couple of comments about a couple of specific questions. But I I think I think that's kind of a dis- a distraction, actually, at this moment. We've got a bigger issue here.
Mr. Conklin, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, if I if I may, I mean, I would, in terms of action tonight, I would suggest that the council or the board not take any action with respect to the ordinance, but continue its review and consider consideration to the twenty second. I wasn't sure if at the last meeting it was continued, the action was continued until then or and this was set just for some some general, again, uh overview discussion. But I would recommend that that action be uh continued to the twenty second. I would like the opportunity uh to speak in executive session with the with the board and then perhaps based on some direction I I received from the board in that meeting, reach out to Mr. Bu- Mr. Brunner with some additional thoughts and and options related to related to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brunner, are you up to that?
Um, yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's anything wrong with you doing that. Before you do it, uh, I just want to reiterate that my intention on the part with the uh, well, first with the uh Cora stuff is I understand it, Cora has a specific carve out for data and numbers, which would be financial records and uh the data that goes into engineering studies. And I think that the analysis performed on data by an engineer should also be considered as data and exempt from work product exemptions. And that's, that's what this says, is that finance and infrastructure being based on data will be exempt from the work product exemption. And specifically, it's because when the J D Hydro uh drafts came out, it was, there was an attempt to make the whole thing secret. And, you know, their their opinions expressed by an engineer may actually fit under the work product exemption. That's what it's for, is to make opinions uh available to the board without the opinion givers uh being afraid of public retaliation, making it hard for them to do their job. So when the when the the engineer says, maybe you you have enough water for this or maybe you don't, but I'm not sure yet, that probably could have been redacted, but to redact the whole report, I just think is indefensible. Uh, and so that's, that's the the thought on the the uh the work product thing. The town board has has done that, tried to do that before with water studies. And it just, it just doesn't feel right to me and to the point where I would try to do something about it. And that's what this, that's what's led to this. Um, there's some other quibbly little words and phrases in here that uh I've talked over with Mr. Conklin and and I think we can reach reasonable accord on a lot of stuff. As far as the court stuff goes, it's my opinion and that that the town often gets, the administration of its ordinance is wrong. And if you disagree with me, please call me privately and let's talk about it. And so my intent here is to find some uh person with a strong commitment to personal ethics as a judge that could be another set of eyes that would uh hear a citizen's complaint about how an ordinance is being mangled and they're being harmed or the town's being harmed, you know. And I asked, I've I've asked for months for comment on this. And I'm very happy that Mr. Conklin is here now. Uh, but like I said, the protest periods are are passed and we're kind of late in the deal for this. So uh, Mr. Knutson had mentioned something about an ombudsman that he's aware of in Durango. As I said, I'm all ears, tell me more. So for a long range solution, uh, that's, I guess, that's kind of my thoughts at the moment. As far as uh withdrawing the petition, like I say, I'm not going to do it for a for a memo that says we'll try to do better. Um, one possibility might be for you to pass this as it is and then amend it uh after some negotiation. I don't know. Questions? Suggestions?
Yes, Mr. Granton.
Well, it might, uh, first of all, I wanted to appreciate the uh flexibility that Mr. Brunner has shown in his presentation now that I think that's really helpful and thank you for that. Um, secondly, I wonder if it would be best if we do consider the possibility of going into, I want to make sure public comments have been exhausted before I talk about that. But it seems like the next step is we as a board members really need to understand our options here. And our lawyer has to give us some options, give us uh guidance on that. And so we we, you know, right now, we're kind of like throwing mud against the wall, trying to figure out what we need to do without that executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Granton. Okay, well, I'm going to open up to general comments from the public. If you would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. Yes, Mr. Mark.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, a couple of comments. Uh, one regarding an ombudsman. I think that's a fantastic idea and probably, Bill, if you look into it, you'll find that it has a very long um history of use in government. That's how it was created. I think it's a Swedish name, actually. Um, but when I worked at a uh nuclear power plant in Pennsylvania, we had an ombudsman there who had a um, it's kind of like a sort of distinct from the government because uh it prevents influence. Um, but then also has the ear of uh the highest authority. And that would be some, it would be kind of like a position that's created within the board or somebody on the board is appointed or maybe even a hired position that hears complaints where there's, um, you know, someone feels like they're being mistreated or there's something that is not being run correctly. And it's a way for people to um anonymously report problems and have them fixed. Uh, kind of like a a layer between the government and the, because, you know, bringing bringing your complaints to the the current town staff is not very productive in my experience. And second, you guys, uh, no offense, Paige, uh, you personally have not had much time to deal with this on the board, but the board itself. but the board itself has been dealing with this since at least August. Um, you guys have had ample time to deal with this matter, uh, in a more productive way. And Bill has been kind of just ticked down the road, so, um, you have to deal with it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Galaxy Tab S two, please state your name and then make your comments.
Thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor, Mary, um, Galaxy X two, also Akka Stephen Keenan. I don't know why I'm saying that, Madam Mayor, but I guess it is. Um, so I just want to make a comment that relates to what this discussion's about as far as transparency and, uh, trying to have more productive meetings um, and more involvement with the community. Um, certainly if the town knows more about these, uh, you know, Zoom meetings that they can get on to, I think that they would participate. But also I do think that we should consider, especially since we were discussing at the last meeting, the amount of money that's been spent on audio visual. I really would like to see, I don't, I know for a fact.
Keenan, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but we are talking about this proposed ordinance. We're not talking about other subjects. So if you have comments specific to this ordinance, please make them at this time.
Just, just that the way it's being presented as far as the ordinance, it would be nice for the community to be able to present things auto visually. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? Yes, Ms. Pat.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Hi, this is.
Hello? Oh dear.
It muted me by mistake, I guess. Um, so I've, I'm, I'm glad that this is coming forward. I understand, um, you know, that there could be issues that are a little problematic about it. But, um, without something like this, without something like this coming in front of you, nothing ever gets done. So I really applaud Bill Brunner and his efforts for doing this. I'd like to, um, point out that, um, the fact that it's been pushed to such a late date now, and it sounds like Bill's the one who's expected to back down, so you guys can address it better. It, it's endemic of the unreliable work that comes out of Town Hall. Um, the fact that it was allowed to go this long, and the same unreliable work, I know there's been talk about how transparent we are because we post things on the website. Well, I don't know how many of you have actually tried to search for things there, uh, aside from just glossing it over and seeing.
Ms. Watson, again, we are specifically.
I know.
This.
Exactly, but I'm responding to.
Please keep your comments to this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, I understand you. But what I'm saying is, um, and this is part of the ordinance, Mary, because I'm talking about the transparency portion of this, the redacting information. Um, we are not as transparent as you think we are. We have certain things that are available, but many things are not available. I've tried making core requests for things that I believe should be out there that, that are very accessible to us, and they're not. I want to say that I'm a little bit suspicious of Town Hall redacting information in, on documents. So I know there's some talk in this about making sure things get redacted that need to be redacted. But what I'm seeing redacted is the personal information of liquor license applicants, which is not redactable. We redact the addresses of municipal candidates. How could that be? I just think, and we redact information that would be an embarrassment to the staff. So my question is, who makes the decision about these redactions? Because, um, it's being abused. So I think it's really important that this has come up. I hope that, um, some movement forward can come out of it. I kind of like Mr. Brunner's suggestion of adopting it as is, because that would be a total motivation to pick, and kick people's asses to do something about it. Because if, if Bill just backs down, you're going to be putting him off again and again and again now. Because we've got this important water issue. There's always something that's more important than, um, some of the problems, um, with the way, um, you know, in the town's code. There, uh, there's always something that's going to be more important than, um, you know, these transparency issues that we're talking about. So, you know, this meeting wouldn't have happened without, um, without the initiative that he put forward. So, um, I'm glad, I'm glad you're addressing this, and I hope that it's not going to be shoved under the rug. And I, I don't know, maybe it would be a stupid idea to adopt it as is, um, with it, just forcing you to, um, you know, forcing yourself, motivating you totally to, uh, um, make amendments to it and, and, um, um, make it more reasonable and actually lawful. Um, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you. Um, uh, I'd like to thank Attorney Conklin for his, uh, thorough review and for sharing that with the public. I think that was really helpful. My comment is related to the cost of Cora requests. And I have not pulled the transcript, so I don't want to say this is absolute truth. But my recollection is that in August, when we were initially discussing, uh, Mr. Brunner's potential ordinance, we talked about the fact that the town has no clear policy for how or when Cora requests, um, cost the public. Um, it depends on the volume of work, but there's no standard. And we had talked about instituting a standard and, uh, getting that information and writing it available to the public. And that never happened. So I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it was official board direction at that time, or if it was just a discussion that never went anywhere. But I'd like to bring that up again as something that I think would be helpful to the public, whether this ordinance is adopted or not, to have really clear guidelines on what a core request looks like and how much it might cost, depending on the work involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosen.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Brunner and, uh, Ms. Watson. Uh, I agree with them, and I'm just voicing my opinion as a member of the public. Um, and I think even in the short time I've been following the town council, um, I feel like there are some shortcomings that, you know, really would be helpful, especially in light of the water issue and my just cursory review of some, uh, of the website and, um, past, um, experiences with the water department. Um, I, I, I felt immediately that something was very, very wrong, and something really needs to be done. I love this community. I, I want to see it thrive. Um, but I feel very strongly that this needs to be straightened out, and this ordinance may be the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Thank you, Ms. Rose. Anyone? Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing.
Hello? Hello?
Hello? Who is this?
This is, uh, Bill Brunner again.
Oh, okay, Bill.
So, just to reiterate, uh, this is a rock and a hard place. Yeah, it is. So balls in your court. Consider carefully.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brunner. All right. Since we have no other comments, then, uh, Mr. Knutson, would you like to move to go into executive session?
Can I start with a joke?
Yes, Mr. Conklin. We are muted, Mr. Conklin.
I was muted, sorry about that. Uh, before we, there's any motion for executive session, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, was the action at the prior meeting to continue action on the proposed ordinance to the meeting on the twenty second? If not, I would suggest that some, make a motion to continue the consideration of this initiated ordinance until, to the Board of Trustees' meeting on the twenty second.
Would that be appropriate to do out of, after the executive session or before?
I've, in, I, either is fine, although, I, I think either is fine.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to continue this to the twenty second? Ms. Beddinger?
I move that we can continue the consideration of this item to the twenty second.
Okay, do I have a second?
We have to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, so we have a motion on the board to continue this item until the twenty second. Any comment from the discussion from the board? No, comment, comment from the public? I've got reverb here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, seeing none, all in, all in. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, Mr. Knutson, joke.
Okay, joke first. Um, when a government says it'll do something, it will. You don't have to remind it every six months.
Okay, now, let's go.
Secondly, um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we move into executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B for the purpose of discussing this initiative.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Objection, objection. Point of order.
Mr. Brunner, you cannot make a point of order. I'm sorry, if I, when I open this up.
You're, you're breaking the law. You can't go into executive session to discuss it. You can only go into executive session to get legal advice from your attorney. You have to make your discussions in public.
Mr. Brunner, that's the way I.
All right, Ms., Mr. Conklin, go ahead and say what you need to say.
The executive, I think the, the, the word, it's discuss, but for a conference with the town attorney related to legal issues, with legal advice on, specifically with questions related to the initiative, initiated ordinance.
Okay.
I.
Please state the specific questions.
Do, we don't have to, do we?
You, you just, the, I, this is a little out of order, but the, I'll, I'll just say that what the open, open meetings law requires is that a motion recite the specific statutory section for the purpose of the executive session, and then state with as much specificity as possible what these, that, that this is going to concern, and the legal advice that we're going to discuss relates to the, the proposed ordinance and, uh, procedural issues arising thereunder.
Okay. So we have a motion. Did we get a second, I believe? Who seconded it?
I did, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purpose of getting legal advice on specific questions related to the proposed ordinance. All in favor? Excuse me.
Aye.
We have a, Ms. Rosen, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify a point where, um, you moved to, uh, make, or state a decision on the twenty second, but you did not clarify whether you were going to do that before the, uh, the general council meeting or after.
No, we're, no, we're, during.
Oh, it'll be during.
Right, it'll be on, it'll be on the.
Okay.
All right, so you have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
All right. With that motion passes, we are going to go into executive session. Corinne, can you give us the song and dance to do this again?
I'm gonna, I'm going, I'll let you know once we're all in there. I'm going to put you in a, a breakout room, so you'll be, will be in the executive session outside of the general meeting. It'll just take me a minute.
Okay.